or oppose any candidate nor party. And but we do work to make to empower, grow and protect the vote. And that's what we're here for, to help you make decisions on who you're going to vote for no later than November 5th. But you can start voting, as Deb said earlier, September 20th, right in City Council. Not sure where it will be, depending upon the construction outside, I suppose. But we're going to go proceed. Are we ready to begin? Everybody? Questions, orders? Deb? Deb Brinkman from St. Louis Park is our moderator today, tonight. And thank you very much, Deb. And there's the candidates. I will turn it over to Deb. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Colleen. Thank you to everybody for attending this forum. The purpose of this evening's forum is to provide an opportunity to hear the candidates for City Council. All candidates who filed with the Minnesota Secretary of State's office were invited to attend. Principal issues will be discussed here tonight. We will try to cover as many issues as possible in the time that we have. Please feel free to contact a candidate directly if your question was not addressed here tonight. I'll now explain the rules and format of tonight's forum. A candidate will remain seated throughout the entire candidate forum. A candidate will have one minute to make an opening statement and up to two minutes to answer the question that was sent out in advance. A candidate may have one or two minutes to answer each question submitted by the Edina General Community. The moderator, that means me, will tell you which questions have a one or two-minute time response. A candidate will have one minute to make a closing statement. League volunteers will time the candidates' responses and indicate to the candidate when they have 60 seconds remaining, 45 seconds remaining for a two-minute question, and for all other questions, 30 seconds remaining and 15 seconds remaining. And that's and then they'll hold up a stop sign so that you'll know that your time is up. We ask you to complete your sentence as soon as you can so that we can stay on time here. The moderator will ask all questions. The League of Women Voters Edina determines which questions will be asked and attempts in good faith to cover the topics of interest indicated by the submitted questions. All written questions become the property of the League of Women Voters Edina. The city of Edina, our host site for this forum, decided in 2022 that they will not livestream the candidate forums for the League of Women Voters Edina on any of the city's online platforms, including its website, YouTube channel, Facebook page, or Edina TV. The city of Edina is recording the forum for the League of Women Voters Edina and will provide an electronic copy to the League of Women Voters Edina at the end of this forum. League of Women Voters Edina will put it on their website, L W V E Dyna.org, in the next day or two following the forum. I'll now introduce the candidates that are present. Carolyn Jackson, James Pierce, and Ryan Day. And we'll start with opening remarks by the candidate. We're going to start in alphabetical order using your first name. So Carolyn, we'll start with you for your one-minute opening remark.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Carolyn Jackson, and I am running for Edina City Council. Our family moved to Edina 24 years ago because of its great schools, local parks, and strong sense of community. I currently serve on the Edina City Council. I also participated in Vision Edina and served as Chair of the city's Energy and Environment Commission. Edina's vision and comprehensive plans spell out guidelines for leading a future-oriented and innovative city. I ran on these values and have served with them in mind. I am proud of the work I have done so far. A good example of that work is Weber Park. 2016 was the wettest year on record. A citizen group assessed the flood risk. The city built stormwater infrastructure. We transformed risk into a community treasure. Yes, that took eight years. Big things take vision and time. I look forward to a robust conversation this evening about our city's vision. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. James Pierce.
Good evening. My name is James Pierce, and I want to thank the League of Women Voters for organizing tonight's forum, Carolyn Jackson, and Ryan Day for their commitment to civic service. I've served on the Edina City Council for four years, and I've enjoyed my experience. I also led the Race and Equity Task Force for Edina back in 2018. My focus is ensuring Edina remains a vibrant city with a thriving business community, welcoming parks, and regional recreational venues. I'm committed to providing top-tier city services and fostering inclusive neighborhoods with strong family values while protecting our community for future generations. While unanimous decisions are rare, every perspective matters. My duty is to listen, ask questions, and represent all Edina residents. This approach has always served me well, and I look forward to tonight's discussion and ask for your vote in November.
Thank you, James. And Ryan Day.
Good evening. I'll start by saying thank you to the League of Women Voters Forum for hosting this forum. Thank you to all the residents here today and to everybody that's going to tune in later. My name is Ryan Day. I moved to Edina in 2021 with my wife Clara, who's in the audience right now, and our dog Logan, when we were fortunate enough to purchase our first home together. Before I got involved in public service, my careers revolved around chemical engineering. And while these two professions may not seem related, once I joined the city's planning commission, I realized just how much public service and engineering have in common. Success in both depends on adopting a problem-solving focus, being an effective project manager, learning to collaborate with diverse teams, especially those who think differently than you do, and being ready to innovate and adapt to new challenges quickly and with purpose. These are things that I excel at, and I want to use these skills to benefit all of Edina. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Now, we will proceed to the question that was asked in advance. Candidates, we'll have two minutes to answer this question. The question and James will start with you for the answer. The question is, what do you think is the most pressing issue facing the city of Edina?
The most pressing issues facing Edina, I list three. The first one, affordable housing. Second, transportation and traffic. And third, too much development. For housing affordability, the median home value in Edina is over $660,000, making it unaffordable for many. In seven years, it's projected to exceed $1 million, affecting housing affordability for all income levels. As a council, we need to ensure affordable housing for our residents, and we can do that by continuing to protect NOAA, naturally occurring affordable housing. And I think we need to consider modifying zoning in a in a smart way so that we can enable smaller homes being built. We also need to be sure that we can find multiple or we can find multiple sustainable funding sources so that we don't have to rely on things like TIF exclusively in that way. For transportation and traffic, as Edina's population grows and the city becomes denser, traffic will continue to be a major issue. Congestion can be abated by ensuring that we have public transportation options, we have more adequate bike and pedestrian infrastructure to combat this problem, and we should continue to invest in other sustainable ways of transportation, like creating safe bike lanes and more trails. Promoting those alternatives will give us a much better position to be in. And then using AI so that we can look at we can look at effective traffic flows. And then from a development perspective, I think we just need a better balance of making sure that we're making smart decisions on where we need to have have development and where we don't.
Thank you, James. Ryan Day.
Well, two things immediately come to mind here. The first issue is answering the question, how do we develop, grow, and adjust to new societal challenges, really plan for the future without losing sight of what makes Edina such an attractive place to live for the residents currently here? Right now, our residents value safety and security. They value green space and parks. They value tight-knit neighborhoods. How do we make sure we don't lose those things while stopping while still opening our arms to future residents? For the city council to answer that question, we have to consider appropriate balance. Balance between progress and preservation, as well as balance between pushing for growth and density and honoring commitments we've made to our current residents through Vision Edina, small area plans, the comp plan, and zoning. The second pressing issue is a question that I've heard repeated by many residents as I've gone door-to-door, and that is, how can I afford to live in Edina now and into the future? And that isn't a question that's exclusive to the working class. It's not exclusive to millennials looking to raise a family, and it's not exclusive to seniors living on a fixed income. It's a question that many people across all demographics resonate with. If city councils tackle that issue, we have to think holistically. Affordability for a community is more than just the rent and mortgage you pay each month. It's also property taxes, it's utility costs, it's sales taxes, and it's insurance. The costs of all these things have significantly increased. Our goal should be to help ease the burden where we can. If we're going to do that, the city council has to recall what our core mission is. We must emphasize public safety, infrastructure, and essential services, and learn to distinguish must-haves from nice-to-haves and cut back where appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Carolyn Jackson.
Thank you. The two biggest issues, in my opinion, facing the city of Edina are an aging population and the decreasing birth rate. An aging population brings challenges and costs to our city. We are already seeing the increased costs. First, baby boomer retirements are creating a staffing shortage. Recruiting and retaining quality staff comes with increasing costs. Second, an aging population means more medical emergency calls for our public safety staff. Both police and firefighters respond to emergency calls, and the number of these calls has been increasing exponentially. We are building a second full fire station and still need a third. We are also hiring more police officers and paramedic firefighters. Finally, as people age, they often have to give up driving. We need to design our city to have lifecycle housing, where seniors can access stores and services without driving. When people want to leave their house but stay in our community, we need to provide them options. The second challenge is related. Minnesota has a declining birth rate. With fewer children on the way, our community is going to compete for families with children. And we will be competing with other cities, not just in Minnesota, but nationwide. Families with children fill and fund our schools and provide buyers for homes in our beautiful neighborhoods. I want green neighborhoods for children with well-kept parks. We also need a sidewalk system where children can walk and ride bikes safely. In other words, I want Edina to be the best city in Minnesota to raise a family. These two concerns intersect in the decisions we make today. We need a vision of a 21st-century suburb not centered around cars, but centered around the people who live here.
Thank you, Carolyn. Now, we will ask questions that have been submitted by the general community, and they were submitted to the League of Women Voters Edina by email, or they were submitted here at the forum. A candidate will have one minute to answer each question unless we've otherwise designated. All right, we'll start with the first question. Ryan, we'll start with you. The topic is on budget. City budget and taxes are top of mind with many voters. What would you propose to manage the city, the budget and tax increases?
Start with the new guy first. I see. All right, so yes, of course, the budget is on top of mind, right? And as I said in the opening statement, the big thing for us to consider is how to distinguish nice-to-haves from must-haves and cut back where appropriate. Right, and that's a huge challenge for us. The, you know, projected budget increase that we face is one, I think, that's caught a lot of people by surprise, and it's caught a lot of attention. And again, I think we need to take a hard look at looking at affordability and really the how we maintain costs in the city as a whole. So again, holistically, thinking about, you know, insurance, your your sales tax, your property tax, how do we manage those things and keep those those decreases to a minimum and make sure we still fund the city appropriately? Thanks.
Thank you, Ryan. Carolyn.
Thank you. This has been a topic of discussion across the city. So 86 or 72% of our city's budget goes for public safety. That's firemen and who are paramedics and police officers. If you add in public works, which is snow plowing and repairing our streets, that's 96% of our budget. There's not a lot of room to cut. We are bringing on a second fire station, which means we have debt service to pay, and we're looking at a third. We're going to have to make some hard decisions. A 13% increase in our levy is a very large increase, and there are going to be things that are going to be on the table that are going to mean some pain for various and sundry things that we all really enjoy. We have a high level of service. Health costs are increasing. We want to keep our high-quality city employees, but we're going to be having to making some difficult decisions.
Thank you very much. James?
Thank you. As you've heard tonight, the majority of our budget is in labor costs. And so my answer is a little different from my from Carolyn and Ryan. Thanks. I think our challenge is that we have to tie value to cost and help residents understand that. Once they understand that, then we have the tools that we can use as a council to make decisions and trade-offs. And today, we don't do a great job at that. If I were to say that 70% of our budget is snow plowing, and here is how quickly we plow streets, residents may be pleased with that. If I were to say, well, it's going to take us an hour longer, then they may be okay with that cost. And so once we're able to clearly tie value to cost, then as a council, we can go through the budget and make smarter decisions on what we need to fund and what we can scale back.
Thank you, James. All right, our next question will be on affordable housing. Carolyn, we'll start with you for this question. Do you support zoning changes to increase the amount of affordable housing in Edina? Why or why not?
That's an excellent question, and I'm glad it was framed that way. We had some students from the Humphrey School, some graduate students, come in, and they did a study on how we can reduce vehicle miles traveled in our city. And they identified some zones, rather than upzoning all of the city, they identified areas where we can have more density that will actually impact our vehicle miles traveled, more people be able to take transit. And that's first along France Avenue, second along Vernon Avenue, and then finally down in the Cahill area. Those are areas where I'd really consider increasing the density, whether to twin homes or to something maybe a little bit denser than that. But that can increase the amount of transit that we can use in our city, and I think it would be a really smart change for affordability and for better mobility.
Thank you, Carolyn. And James?
Can you repeat the question?
Yes. Do you support zoning changes to increase the amount of affordable housing in Edina? Why or why not?
Thank you. I do support zoning changes, but what you will hear from me is, I think our approach has to be balanced. And so I believe we need a little bit more medium density. And what that means would be twin homes as an example. And so the challenge with affordable housing is that the land cost is too high. And so one way to adjust that would be to modify zoning so that we could have more twin homes on perhaps the same parcel of land. And there are lots of opportunities across Edina to do that, but we have to be smart about looking at the zoning and making changes that get the preferred outcome, which for me would be lower development costs for homes that would be at or below the median value and to promote home ownership for affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, James. And Ryan?
So this is a great question because, you know, affordable housing is a vital part of the housing mix in our city, and a lot of things come easier when you have a roof over your head. Currently, we are doing a zoning audit in the planning commission level to look at our current zone types and think about how can we make it easier to build by right. So yes, I would say I would support zoning changes to make affordable housing easier to do. And then with that, I would say you'd have to make sure that when we change zoning, that we follow the proper process in doing so and evaluating the impact on the community and making sure we really evaluate the data so that if we change a zone, it's done for it's done in a meaningful way. Thanks.
Thank you, Ryan. All right, our next question will be again on affordable housing. James, we'll start with you. Edina has a goal of having 1,804 affordable units. To date, 353 have been built. How do you perceive this goal to be accomplished, and where in the city do you foresee to have these units?
Thank you for the question. I the the goal, and you've heard a little bit about this tonight, when you look at it on the surface, it does seem unachievable because of the total number and the progress that we've made. And I think the there's two primary issues. One, I just mentioned, it's the cost of the land. Well, to address the cost of the land, I believe we need additional multiple sources of dollars to be able to procure land and then be able to add affordable housing. Today, I think we rely a little too heavily on TIF for that. And so other communities in in the union have come up with other ways to provide sustainable sources so that we could continue to build additional affordable housing and to get away from only having apartment affordable affordable units. Thank you.
Thank you, James. And Ryan?
Could you just repeat the question quick for me, please?
Yes. Edina has a goal of having 1,804 affordable units. To date, 353 have been built. How do you perceive this goal to be accomplished, and where in the city do you foresee these units?
Well, I think we've made good progress on this goal to date. One of the problems with the goal from the Met Council is that it's not a smart goal as we kind of define it at work, right? And a smart goal is something that's specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-bound. The problem here is that the achievable piece is a bit missing because we don't have really the agency as a city to do to do to develop on our own, right? We have to wait for developers to come. So I think we've made good strides with the opportunities that have come forward to us so far. As far as where to locate affordable housing, you know, I think obviously the most sensible places are close to transit, close to services. It doesn't make sense to place these to place affordable housing on an island, right? You have to make sure that the people that are living in those units have access to everything that they need. And there are certain parts of the city that are, you know, made for that and certain parts of the city that aren't.
Thank you, Ryan. Carolyn?
Yes, thank you. This is a great question. So you can look at, do we want to do this efficiently, or do we want to do this in a balanced manner? And we've looked at this as a city in a lot of different ways. We've provided 100% affordable housing apartment buildings. We have an inclusionary policy where 10% or 20% of the units are set aside for income-restricted renters. And we also have a program to encourage ownership on an affordable basis, whether it's through the Land Trust or through the Housing Foundation's second mortgage program. So some are more efficient than others, but having different types allows us to mix it throughout the city. We have six areas of change where are the only places we can build apartment buildings. That's not an integrated process of bringing affordable housing to every neighborhood. So I have think that we're not going to be able to reach the 1804 number, but we certainly are trying, and we want to have quality, both renting and ownership options for our affordable neighbors, for our income-restricted neighbors.
Thank you, Carolyn. We have another question on affordable housing, a little bit more specific. What is and again, we'll start with Ryan on this one. What is your position on building affordable housing next to the fire station? And what type of affordable housing would you support on that site?
Well, that's a difficult question to ask because or to answer because it's really it depends. So I haven't been provided with the same, I guess, information that the city council has to date on on such a proposal. So I really can't give an answer or a strong position on that one without having seen enough data in front of me or really having gone through the process. So it's that's a really difficult one for me to really confront because, again, being on the planning commission, I haven't seen that proposal. I was only actually only made aware of it via Nextdoor very recently. So yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Ryan. And Carolyn?
Thank you. I think this is a wonderful opportunity. Even if we look at selling this, we bought a large acre of property, only part of which we need to build the fire station. The rest of it, we could either sell for a profit, and guess what? It would probably develop as apartments. Instead, we have the opportunity here to have some ownership, affordable ownership opportunities, and I really am looking forward to that. We can have townhomes, most likely to make it viable. We'll also have some apartments there. I think it's a nice mix. It's near transit. It's close to Highway 494 to get to jobs. I think it's a fantastic location for affordable housing, and I would love to see some ownership opportunities there that definitely need that missing middle.
Thank you, Carolyn. And James?
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, there's two challenges with affordable housing. One is the cost of the land, and therefore the second is, how do you fund that? So what are the sources that we can utilize to purchase land in order to build affordable homes? And so we haven't seen a proposal come through yet for a final vote on this, but I do think it is smart for the city to take land that the city owns and ask the question, what outcomes are the better outcomes that our community is asking us for? And if one of those is affordable housing, this could be a great opportunity to use a portion of that land for affordable housing. What I have been really clear from an advocacy standpoint is home ownership options. I think we have enough rental affordable housing units. And so now it's really time for us to think about how can we help residents build additional equity in having some home ownership options? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next question will be on the budget and police, so we'll switch topics here. Carolyn, we'll start with you. In the mayoral forum that we had just earlier tonight, we heard that five more police officers are to be hired. How will we be paying for that?
It's five more public safety officers. I don't know the mix between firefighters and police officers off the top of my head, but well, we're that's part of why the levy is going to be projected to be up 13.1%. So we will pay for that with property taxes, the way we pay for our other fire and police officers with property taxes. The question is whether we need to cut other services to not have the increase in levy that we're looking at that's projected right now. We've heard from the community that we really need these police officers and paramedics. We have increased, as I mentioned in my opening statement or in my question, increased number of calls for public service opportunities or both for medical emergencies and for crime. We need these officers, and we will find a way to pay for them because that's the number one job of the city is to keep our residents safe.
Thank you, Carolyn. And James?
Thank you. So the for that question, I talked about this earlier, so you'll hear a theme from me. It's value to cost, everybody understanding what that is, that equals outcomes. And so that's what you invest in because you want a desired outcome. And so we're hearing from our residents, we continue to hear, safety is important. We have data that suggests that as well. And so the question of how do we pay for additional officers, well, it's property taxes. Like, there's no magical fund that we're going to have to 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 pay for services. So every service that's in our budget, we're leveraging property taxes for that. Sometimes we will have grant money that we can use for different projects, but for that specific question, it's coming from property taxes. And I think we have to be sure that people understand the cost, the value for the desired outcome. And I believe the outcome here is something that we definitely need, so I would support it.
Thank you, James. And Ryan?
So I'll start by making sure I thank the Edina Police Department for the work that they do in this community. Obviously, it's an important thing that they do. I, you know, may not get enough thank yous from from me and the rest of the residents, but we appreciate their work, right? So as far as funding police, obviously, police are one of those things that are a must-have. They're not a nice-to-have, they're a must-have, right? And this is what residents want to pay taxes for, police, safety, security, the social the services that we depend on, right? So when we think about funding and making sure that we balance that, we think maybe from a city level, where else are we overextended that we could potentially cut back? We're not overextended in the police department. We're probably overextended in other places, and we can probably pull back from funding if we want to achieve the proper balance. Thanks.
Thank you, Ryan. All right, we'll switch topics, and we the topic will be on garbage. James, we'll start with you for this topic or this question. In respect to garbage collection and treatment, how does a city meet or exceed the goals set by the state for reducing solid waste?
Oh, my goodness. Thank you. Thank you for the question.
That's a tough one, right?
One of the I'd say one of the principal things that we have done is starting the organics program. And I know that's not popular for everyone, but I'll use a personal example. When we started using composting and you have the smaller can, after probably a month or so, my wife and I realized, you know, we don't actually have as much waste going to the landfill, so we downsized and got a smaller bin. And so I think that that is one of And so I think that that is one of the things that I would point to that is helping us reduce solid waste in that it's not going into a landfill and it's producing a benefit. And then our commission has continued to look at other options that we might utilize to be able to reduce our waste even further.
Thank you, James. And Ryan?
That's an interesting question. So I think I'll take a bit different tact on this one. I think in order to reduce waste in the city, right, we're trying to work towards it by increasing mixed-use areas and improving walkability to services. So when services and resources are close, you probably need to make less big trips and have less bags with you, less packaging, et cetera, right? So services are close to residents and they don't have to bring, you know, put 10 bags in the back of their car. Instead, they can go get what they need just for dinner that night. I think that provides a lot of benefit to us and really just, you know, that walkability piece, that accessibility piece could probably help cut down on the waste in the city. Thanks.
Thank you, Ryan. And Carolyn?
Yes, thank you. So the state has set us a goal of reducing, of diverting 75% of our solid waste either to organics recycling or to recycling. Currently, we're at 46%. We have a long way to go and the goal is 2030. We have an organics recycling program. I encourage everybody to do that. Like James, when we started doing it, it was stunning how little garbage we had after that. And we reduced the size of our garbage can. We also have other programs in place. We have a compostable takeout packaging ordinance here. So if you go to get takeout dinner, it either has to be recyclable or compostable. And we couldn't do that until we had the composting program. We also have the $0.05 bag fee to, because remember, it's reduce, reuse, recycle. And every time you pay $0.05 for a bag, you think about your footprint of garbage. And that's what we need everybody to start thinking about. Our landfills are filling up, the cost of garbage is going to go through the roof when that happens, and I hope that everybody does their part to reduce solid waste.
Thank you, Carolyn. The next question will be on general communication. Ryan, we'll start with you. What is your plan to improve staff responses to residents who come into City Hall?
Wow, that's another tough one. Garbage and then that one. Well, I mean, I think, you know, a lot of it has to do with just adopting a mindset and talking to staff and thinking, my own personal experience, how I try to approach things at work, right? So when we direct staff to engage with residents, I think we need to direct them to practice active listening, right? So actually listening rather than waiting for the chance to speak. And I think a lot of people have maybe, or have come to me and said, you know, usually when I approach staff, it seems like I'm being talked to, not talked with. And I think we need to encourage, you know, a lot more collaboration between the residents and the city and the staff. And I think training and communication with the staff can do that.
Thank you, Ryan. And Carolyn?
So it's an interestingly worded question because we have probably the nicest receptionist I have ever known here at City Hall. And if you come in during the day, she is cheerful and she is friendly. Now, I'm looking out here and you can see the plexiglass. Because of COVID, we put that all up. And I think it is a little intimidating to come up and have to talk through plexiglass. In general, you know, I talked earlier about the increased need for staffing, that we have really well-trained staff, but the cost of recruiting and retaining quality people to work for our city is going up. And that's one of the things that's driving our tax, our levy increase this year. It's very important that we have staff that feel well, who enjoy working here because when you're happy in your work, you're going to be happy in communicating with people. And I think that's a really important thing and we need to keep that in mind as we're looking to the shortage of staffers all across the country and especially in government employment.
Thank you, Carolyn. And James?
Thank you for the question. I'll start just reiterating, I think desired outcomes have a value and those values drive costs. And that's throughout the city. Our city staff, I believe they do a great job at running the city and they've done that for decades. I think I would like to believe that this is more of a training and an expectation challenge. And so being clear with city staff and that includes the City Council to say, hey, when a resident reaches out for whatever the issue is, our expectation is that you respond within a certain timeframe. And so I believe that that is how you address challenges like this and you allow the city manager to then say, well, if that is the desired outcome that the community values, that's going to drive costs or it may not. We have no idea. But if you're framing things from a cost and a value perspective, you can make smarter decisions on what you invest in.
Thank you, James. We'll switch topics now to diversity, equity, and inclusion. Carolyn, we'll start with you for this question. What is one thing you will do personally to fight discrimination and racism?
Oh, golly. That's kind of a personal question, I'll be honest. I know I have done a number of race and bias trainings, especially since the murder of George Floyd. The things I have learned have been exponential. I've learned so much about my own personal biases. I've learned about our history of the United States and we all live in this broken house and we have to work together to solve it. So it's a lifelong challenge. We are a diverse community. We have a lot to learn from one another. We have a lot to go forward and that's something I continually work on. I think it's important that we all have our own perspective and we all are in this together. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. And James?
Thank you. So there's kind of a simple thing that I think I do to answer that question. And it's really to lean in to understanding and valuing differences. And it really doesn't matter what those differences are. And so just taking the perspective of trying to learn something from someone else and then taking that to actually grow my perspective. And so that is what I'll continue to do to fight racism and discrimination. And then the second thing that I would do, if you look around even tonight, there's not a whole lot of ethnic diversity in this room. And so I realized when I ran the first time, I really didn't reach out as often. And so this time around, I'm trying to go to those communities that we don't often talk to, to understand what their perspectives are as well because it's my job to be focused on the entire, all the residents in Edina, not just the neighborhood I live in.
Thank you, James. And Ryan?
So for me, I think this is pretty straightforward. I would approach every project, every process with the mindset, you know, how would this potentially benefit me more than others, right? And when I ask that question, I think about the privileges I have that others don't. And, you know, when I think about those privileges, making sure that I'm not taking them for granted and thinking about how others, you know, what, again, the privileges that others don't have, right? So how would it potentially benefit me more than others if I see a way that it would benefit somebody like me and my privileges more than others? And I'll seek to overcome that, again, in every project, in every process. Thanks.
Thank you, Ryan. All right, we will switch topics again to small business. And James, we'll start with you for this question. What can Edina do to improve, protect, and encourage more small businesses to locate here?
Thank you. One of the, well, maybe I'd say two things. One is to really understand what some of the challenges are for small businesses. I think we often think about the capital stack. So do they have enough funding to provide whatever their services are? And so I think understanding that and really trying to understand what some of their other challenges might be. And then as a city, we have tons of resources to actually help solve some of those challenges. And I think partnering with larger businesses to help solve some of those challenges would be huge. And we actually do some of that in the Innovation Center that we help fund as a city so that the small entrepreneurs have a place to go where they can get questions answered to hopefully continue to drive their revenue and help them be more successful sooner.
Thank you, James. And Ryan?
Well, I think if you want to attract small business, you have to have areas for small businesses to settle. So you have to think about balanced development, right? If we lose our planned industrial areas and our commercial districts residential, no small business can settle here, right? So that's the first thing. We should think, you know, as we, small businesses approach us, how can we revitalize areas that attract small businesses? How can we set them up for success, right? And some ways we could do that would be to simplify the process for starting and running a business in Edina, reducing red tape and making it easier for small businesses to navigate regulations and obtain permits and making it easier for them to comply with zoning laws. And again, really just making sure that they understand the process, know the process, and trust the process. Thanks.
Thank you, Ryan. And Carolyn?
Yes, thank you. This is a great question. So two things come to mind. First of all, in a number of new developments of commercial buildings and mixed-use buildings in our city, the developers have come forward with short-term lease ideas for small businesses. It is very difficult for a small business to commit to a 10-year lease because you don't know if you're going to be around for 10 years when you're starting out. And so these creative lease opportunities are a wonderful way for someone to come in and get their feet wet, get their business going, and then they can move to a larger space or a more permanent space. The second thing we have done is to fund the Edina Innovation Lab. And this is a unique opportunity for small businesses in the Twin Cities where a business already exists, but they're thinking about growing and they don't know how to manage the growth. So it's peer-supported, counseled opportunity for small businesses to figure out how to take their business to the next level. And I'm very proud of supporting that. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Our next question will be a little bit more clarification, but again, on businesses here in Edina. Ryan, we'll start with you. What do you see as the future of Edina's liquor business?
Well, I mean, for a long time, the Edina liquor business has been an important revenue generator for our park system. We're in the liquor business now. We've committed to that in the past. And I think unless we see a good, solid reason to get rid of that revenue funding source for our parks, right, we wouldn't exit the Edina liquor business. Now, of course, you have to look at it from a business perspective. If we have to keep putting more and more funds into the Edina liquor business to keep it afloat and the costs get too much to handle and it starts to become a burden to our tax levy, to our city, we have to hire more resources to manage that, right? And then we maybe have to start having the discussion about, okay, maybe we take a step back here. But right now, it's an important revenue generator for us and I think it will be into the future.
Thank you, Ryan. And Carolyn?
Yes, thank you. So it's true, we have a thing called the Edina Law. And that allows us to take our profits from the liquor stores and use it to pay for our enterprises in our park system. So including Edinburgh Park and the pool and other opportunities. So it's really a good source of funds for our park enterprises. And so in that sense, I'm very much supportive of our liquor service here, our liquor stores here in Edina. Like any business, it constantly needs to be reviewed and updated. A few years ago, before I was on council, the liquor store went through a marketing and visiting program and they were added delivery service at that time. I believe it's time to do that again. I think the staff might actually be doing that as we speak and I hope that they continue to learn and revitalize the business because it is an important source of funding for our parks.
Thank you, Carolyn. And James?
Thank you for that question. I agree with everything that's already been said. So I will add this, and just to think about it in this way, because the liquor stores provide revenue generation that subsidizes other services, if we don't have that, then we're losing revenue to subsidize those services. And so then as a city, we have a decision to make. How do we generate the revenue to pay for the services that we now, we no longer can subsidize? And so that goes back to the desired outcomes, value driving the cost. And so I believe, based on what we've decided to spend dollars on, we would keep the Edina liquor store because it does subsidize something that the community has proven that they want to ensure that we continue to have. And that's a great park system for Edina.
Thank you, James. All right, our next question, the topic will be on TIF financing. Carolyn, we'll start with you. What do you think is an example of responsible TIF for Edina?
Well, I'll use the example of something that happened before I was on council. So if I get the details off, it's because I only know it anecdotally. During the Great Recession, we used TIF money to help revitalize public areas at Southdale Mall that I believe was about $15 million. I don't know the exact number. I'm doing this from memory. But that then generated hundreds of millions of dollars of private development that was not TIF-generated. We look at TIF as a leveraging tool. So we can use TIF to get public benefits that then will encourage additional private development in our city. And I think the use of TIF at the Southdale during the Great Recession was a brilliant use of it.
Thank you, Carolyn. And James?
Thank you. I'll give a specific answer. I think we should use TIF when there's a public benefit that's there. And so you've heard that already tonight. So I'll use a specific example. When we did the Perkins site for Mason Green, there was TIF attached to that. And what we did with the majority of that TIF is we improved the traffic around City Hall and for the Sunny Slope neighborhood. Now, you may not like the roundabouts. I understand that. But I was one, along with other council members, to say, all right, if we can solve the problem that many of our Sunny Slope residents are talking about, which had nothing to do with the development, then maybe that would be a good use to earmark some of those funds to improve pedestrian traffic ways so that they could walk from Sunny Slope to OLG and then to clean up some of the traffic, maybe redo the bridge over 100. So things like that, we were able to leverage some of those dollars to get those projects done.
Thank you, James. And Ryan?
So I think TIF should be utilized really in areas that economic activity would not have happened otherwise. So there's a lot of research out there that says, you know, TIF doesn't work out so much and from a value perspective, when it's used in areas that are already economically vibrant. Because what it does is it displaces economic activity that would have happened otherwise in economically vibrant areas, right? So TIF for Edina makes sense if you have, say, a blighted warehouse in the Cahill District that needs environmental remediation or some other site that isn't already one of the most valuable pieces of land in Edina. And, you know, that's where we should deploy it, maybe not other places. Thanks.
Thank you, Ryan. All right, our next question is a little bit of a variation of TIF. James, we'll start with you for this question. How does Edina promote development of major attractive projects on the France Avenue corridor without TIF?
That's a great question. And so I have done quite a bit of research and I continue to ask that question. I would say that the city, we use TIF not because we, it's the only thing we have to do, right? We use TIF really because we can and we follow the rules because we can use it in a particular way. There are other ways to fund development. The challenge is for the size of the developments that we're doing, the other ways that we generate revenue, like if we were to do a bond, doesn't create the capacity to be able to do a project of a certain size. And so I think you end up with more of an incremental development type of a track. And so we use TIF in order to have larger capacity, but there are other ways to fund that through grants, through bonding and other things like that.
Thank you, James. And Ryan?
Just repeat the question real quick, please.
Yes. How does Edina promote development of major attractive projects on the France Avenue corridor without TIF?
Well, I mean, I think the fundamental question is how much do we really need to? You know, if we do our job in making sure that the area has the necessary infrastructure, that it's vibrant, that it's walkable, that there's economic value there for developers, right? That development should occur naturally. We shouldn't have to incentivize it or put We shouldn't have to incentivize it or put a carrot on a stick for developers. And I think, you know, the best way to make sure development happens is to keep the city a great place to live, and people are going to naturally want to move here.
Thank you, Ryan, and Carolyn.
Well, thank you. It's interesting, as you read the question, how does the city promote, promote development? We don't promote development. Developers come to us. This is a highly desirable city. Right now, we have a lot of, that we ask from development along France and the Southdale District. We ask them to take a large parcel of land, subdivide it, and put in, at their own expense, internal streets. We ask for sizable setbacks along the streets and along these internal streets. We also ask for an inclusionary housing policy. That's 10% at 50% of AMI, and that's expensive when you have rent restrictions. We also have a green building policy that we impose on them to do redevelopment. We don't have to ask for those things. Developers can come to us without the subdivision and the setbacks of the Southdale area. Well, the, I guess a setback is part of the, the ordinance, but they don't need to subdivide the land. They don't need to have a green building policy. They don't need to have inclusionary housing. But when we want those things, sometimes it's too expensive and we are considering TIF.
Thank you, Carolyn. Our next topic, the question will be on property tax. Ryan, we will start with you. What, if any, changes do you see in Edina's property tax rate? Please explain.
Well, that's a complicated question, right? Because land values change by year, the city growth grows at different rates every year, right? So I think right now, property taxes are probably headed in the wrong direction, and I think they might be continuing to head that way because we have a lot of deferred maintenance, we have a lot of really costs on the books that we have to pay for, and bills are coming due for the development that we've brought into the city. If the development helps, you know, increase tax revenue, then, then the property taxes will go down. But I don't think we're heading in that direction. I think, you know, again, our deferred maintenance costs are going to, are going to catch up to us, and we'll, we'll be asking for more and more money every year.
Thank you, Ryan, and Carolyn.
So, Minnesota taxes are really complicated. We're looking at an increase in our levy of about 13%, and we're just starting the discussion. The final number will be something different from that, I guarantee you, something lower, if I have anything to say about it. But the rate that you'll actually be paying will be considerably less than that because of the way Minnesota does taxes, which is complicated. Yes, property taxes are increasing. We're also asking for increasing services. We are hiring additional public safety staff. We are building one now, new fire station, and we're going to build a second fire station to service the Northeast quadrant. We, the healthcare costs for staff have skyrocketed way beyond the cost of inflation. We want to keep our quality staff. So there are costs beyond our control that are out there. There are costs that our community needs. Again, as I said, with the aging population, we need more paramedics, we need more police officers to care for our population. And so that'll go down, but I don't know how much.
Thank you, Carolyn, and James.
Thank you. I'll start with, desired outcomes have a value, those values drive costs. And so when you look at our tax structure, I, you know, I kind of simplify it this way. It is complicated, as Carolyn said, but you're paying somewhere between 1.2% to 2% of whatever your property value is. That'll get you kind of close to it. And then we use that to pay for services that we think the residents want. We use some of it for deferred maintenance. And so I think, I have been an advocate for the last four years of us being able to sit down and outline, for this budget, these are the outcomes, and here's what the value of that is, so that when we have to make those tough decisions on reducing those tax costs, we know what levers we can pull. But today, we haven't done the best job of that. The staff is, is working through some of that so that we do have a better picture of value and costs.
Thank you. Our next question, Carolyn, we'll start with you, will be on attracting businesses or employers to Edina. How can Edina attract employers to locate, to relocate here?
Well, for the anti-development crowd, you're not going to like this answer, and that is, we're, have on the line at least two new Class A office buildings up for approval. The 70th and France Development, the former U.S. Bank, has an 11-story commercial office building. The first Class A office building that has been built in Edina since Centennial Lakes in 1992. The other ones we're looking at, 7250 France is also a commercial office building, Class A. The world of commercial real estate right now is an upside-down parabola. Older office buildings are empty, new Class A office buildings are filling up. They're built for the 21st century workplace. And so those are online. I think we will attract some very high-paying jobs at these two office buildings. We also have to look at Cahill and what can we do there to continue to have high-paying, interesting engineering and all types of professional jobs in our city.
Thank you, Carolyn, and James.
Thank you for the question. So I would start by asking the question, well, what type of businesses do we want to attract? And so I, I would say services, which would include retail, food, those types of things, technology, you can think of AI and some other things, and then businesses that are geared towards sustainability. And so when I think about those three things, if that is the, is part of the future, then what we need to be doing as a city is thinking about what's the underlying infrastructure we need to be able to support those kinds of businesses? And I earmarked those kinds of businesses because, to me, that's the future of, of businesses. And so we need to make sure we're continuing to grow and then making sure we have the right type of infrastructure and services to enable businesses like those.
Thank you, James, and Ryan.
I don't want to rehash a lot of the same points, but, you know, in order to attract employers or businesses, you have to maintain space for employers or businesses, right? Again, you have to make sure that you don't lose your planned industrial areas, that you don't lose your commercial districts, right? The top employers in the area don't move into the coffee shop at the bottom of a brand-new apartment building. So if we're going to have employers, we need to have space for them to locate here and make sure that we set aside that space. An important piece of that for us would be the Cahill District. That's a massive part of our tax base, an important part of our tax base, and we have to have a plan for the Cahill District. Right now, we don't. We failed to do that last year. That was rejected at the council level, and we need to bring that back. And I would make sure that we do so if I were elected to council. Thanks.
Thank you, Ryan. All right, we will switch topics for a little while here, and the topic is on water quality. James, we'll start with you. What do you see as the role or responsibility of the city in improving water quality in Edina and in the region?
The, the role that the city plays in improving water quality, first, it starts by making sure that we have data that tells us what the, the water quality is, and data that suggests when we are making changes to improve it, that we know we're achieving that, that, that outcome. And Edina has a treatment center, and it still kind of floors me that there's a treatment center in the garage next to Jerry's. And so there's a lot of work that we do to make sure that we have and can continue to have clean water. But you can't manage an outcome unless you've got data and you're using that data to ensure that you're achieving those outcomes.
Thank you, James, and Ryan.
Just repeat the question, just to make sure I answered it appropriately.
Yes, absolutely. What do you see as the role or responsibility of the city in improving water quality in Edina and in the region?
Well, this one hits home a lot because I'm an engineer who used to work for 3M and work for Solventum now, but if you pay any attention to water quality, 3M has had, you know, a lot to do with that, and we've been involved in a lot of litigation. So water quality is something I think is really important because I get, it's brought up at work all the time. Really, maintaining water quality is a fundamental piece of what Edina needs to do. It's a fundamental service, right? It's a basic service. It's important to all of our residents, and we need to make sure that maintain, that water quality is maintained everywhere and that we do our due diligence to make sure that it's getting delivered to everybody equitably and safely. Thanks.
Thank you, Ryan, and Carolyn.
Thank you. So when we're talking water, there are three different ways, water, three different water utilities here in Edina. We have drinking water, we have wastewater, and we have storm water slash surface water. So I don't know what the question is going to, whether it's drinking water, which is really important to, we've put in a new billing system so that we reduce use because when I was first on the Energy and Environment Commission, we were facing a crisis with our aquifer being depleted. We've been able to, with a couple of years of good rain, not have to worry about that so much, but it's a continuing issue. With wastewater, we have a new lift station down in the Cornelia neighborhood. And then with surface and storm water, we, I, for me, safety is the most important thing. We have blue-green algae that comes into Lake Cornelia and some of our other lakes in town, and that's dangerous for our children and our pets. And so I think we have an obligation to make sure that we don't have poisonous surface water in our city.
Thank you, Carolyn. We'll change topics again. This one is on parking policies, and Ryan, we'll start with you. What are your thoughts on parking policies in the city around affordable units?
Well, that's a, that's an interesting question. All right, so, you know, parking is discussed a lot at the city level, and we definitely discuss it when we go through any project that involves affordable housing, right? And I think sometimes the assertion is maintained that you don't need as many public, or as many parking spaces for affordable housing because they'll take the bus or they'll, they don't have a car. We need to be careful about that assertion, about that assumption. So as far as it goes, you know, as far as parking policy around affordable housing, it needs to be the same as everywhere else in the city, and we shouldn't, you know, necessarily assume that we can cut back. Maybe at, at a time later, we could give the developer an option to opt out and transform parking into green space or to permeable surface, and that's something I think we should explore. But I think we should maintain the current parking zones or ordinances that we have in place for affordable areas. Thanks.
Thank you, Ryan, and Carolyn.
Yes, thank you. So, a parking policy is a parking policy. It doesn't matter whether the, it's for an apartment that's market rate or apartments that are affordable housing, whether it's for an affordable single-family home or a McMansion. A policy is a policy, and it's applied evenly across zones. One of the things that we do talk about, however, is when we have an apartment building, we give the residents the option to pay for parking so that if you choose not to have a car, if you do choose to support public transportation, you don't have to have that additional cost of paying for a parking place, and you're not subsidizing your neighbors who do opt to have the parking place. So it's very important to me that that's an additional option, but that the cost of affordability in these buildings includes the cost of parking. So we don't, not so many fees that it's not actually an affordable unit.
Thank you, Carolyn, and James.
Thank you. I would start by asking the question, do we need as much parking as we're planning for? And so I'd always start with that. And so if, if there's a way that we can reduce the needed parking, that's where I think we start. And then from an affordability standpoint, I agree with Carolyn. We do have to make sure that those costs are included because you can fairly quickly get to a point for rental, affordable housing, that you're adding so many fees that it then does no longer be, it's, it's no longer affordable. And so I do think we have to look at it through that particular lens.
Thank you, James. All right, our, our next question is still on development, but a little bit different twist to it. Carolyn, we will start with you. What efforts would you recommend to increase support and expansion of public art, like performing arts and, and others in our city?
I don't see that as necessarily a development issue. We have a wonderful program in our city of small grants for emerging artists. It's a new program that our Arts Commission came up with. Last year, they had, had $5,000 and I believe had seven different recipients, including different cultural dances and music, performances at the 50th and France Art Fair in June. We had an emerging artist section and some silk screening. Our policy for, when we do have TIF, we include public art as something that we will pay for with TIF, and our building policy requires or requests that. And we're going to build a new art center at the new Southdale Library, and I'm super, super excited about that. And it's one of the things I really want to see through if you are kind enough to give me a second term.
Thank you, Carolyn, and James.
Can you repeat that question again?
Yes. What efforts would you recommend to increase support and expansion of public art, like performing arts and others in our city?
Okay. I, thank you. I will focus on the expansion part of your question. And so there's two areas where I would be a proponent of increasing. One is bringing something new to Edina, which would be digital art. And so having a, a forum or a place where we could start to explore digital art, I would look at that. And then in terms of the emerging artists, I, I think it would be great if we had a couple more, maybe one or two other venues similar to Centennial Lakes, the Pavilion, where the amphitheater, those types of things. We've done that in 50th. Actually, my daughter was a musician that played at the 50th and France. I think the more we can do things like that, it would encourage people to participate even more with our art than we do today.
Thank you, James, and Ryan.
So if we're to increase, really improve support for public art, one of the big things we need to do is maintain affordable business space. Now, I'm probably not surprised, but spaces for the arts typically aren't as profitable as other business ventures, right? So I remember, recall seeing an article about the city of Austin, as they've, as they've developed and property taxes have gone up, spaces for the arts have had to leave, right? So in order to make sure that spaces for the arts stay in Edina and are encouraged here, then we need to make sure that there's a place for them and that we maintain affordable small business space, and we do that via zoning and proper planning. Thanks.
Thank you, Ryan. All right, now we will move to our closing statements, and each candidate, I know, goodness, right? Each candidate will have one minute to do their closing statement. James, we will start with you.
Awesome, thank you. Thanks again to the Menlo League of Women Voters, Carolyn Jackson and Ryan Day. This role is critical, yet frequently underappreciated. While nearly 79% of registered voters participate in a national presidential election cycle, turnout falls below 20% in local, non-presidential election cycles. And yet, as we know, all politics is local. By engaging in local politics, we can influence decisions that directly affect our daily lives in the communities where we live, work, and play. For me, this role extends well beyond casting a yes or no vote. It's about delivering meaningful, lasting outcomes for our city and our residents. And while we may not always agree, you can trust that I will never be dismissive of your perspective. In civic roles, it is crucial to have leaders who engage, listen, strive to understand, and who value your perspective as much as they value their own. It is through this approach and philosophy that we can achieve truly the best outcomes for our city, and if this resonates with you, I ask for your support and your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, James, and Ryan.
Thank you. So, you know, when I first began this journey and told my friends and colleagues that I was volunteering for the City's Planning Commission, the most common response I got was, why would you spend your time on that? And really, you know, my immediate reaction was simple. I enjoy solving problems. I'm good at it. So what better place to do that than the place I spent, planned to raise my family for the next several decades? As your city council- As your city council member, this office will be about problem solving. It won't be about winning. It won't be about receiving maximum personal accolades. It will be about overcoming obstacles in the most logical way. I appreciate you listening to what I had to say tonight and being patient with my nerves as a first-time candidate. I would appreciate your vote this fall, and I promise that I will do everything I can to earn it. If you'd like to know more about me and my campaign, please visit my website, ryanforadina.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. And Carolyn.
Thank you. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for hosting this forum tonight. Thank you, Ryan and James, for your willingness to serve. And thank you, audience, for attending this event this evening. This summer, I've been knocking doors all across the city. I've had so many thoughtful conversations, and it has reaffirmed my appreciation for the people who live here. Edina is such an engaged community, and we have such awesome kids here. We owe them a responsible investment in their future. Our past leaders have fostered a strong tradition of innovation. Building on that, we have a plan for the future, built by hundreds of volunteers who have given thousands of hours to articulate and shape our goals. I am so proud to have been a part of that work as a volunteer and on council. It has been an honor and privilege to serve as your city council member, and I ask for your continued support. So starting on September 20th, I ask you to fill in your ballot for Carolyn Jackson, Edina City Council. Thank you so much, and have a lovely evening.
Thank you, Carolyn. Thank you to all the candidates for participating in this forum and for your willingness to participate in the democratic process by running for public office. Thank you to the League of Women Voters, Edina, for sponsoring this forum, the city of Edina for videotaping this forum and for providing it to the League of Women Voters, Edina. It will be available on the next day or the day after for viewing on the League of Women Voters' website, lweedina.org. Thank you for attending this, tonight's forum. And please remember to vote by 8:00 PM on Tuesday, November 5th. Early voting starts on Friday, September 20th, at Edina City Hall. This concludes the forum for the Edina City Council.